Great, good evening, everyone. I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. And we'll begin our meeting tonight with a moment of silence before we do the Pledge of Allegiance. So I ask you to join me for a moment of silence. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, and next we will have a roll call.
Commissioner Rebert?
Here.
Commissioner Allen?
Nope.
Right here. Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Present.
Commissioner Lanier?
Present.
Mayor Bliss?
I'm here, and can I get a motion to excuse Commissioner Allen tonight?
Support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. Thank you, thank you Commissioner Jones. So next will be our first opportunity for public comment tonight. And so if you haven't been to our meetings before, let me just walk you through our agenda. We have multiple opportunities for public comment. So the first one tonight is if you're here to comment on anything that is on the agenda. So before you, if you have a copy of our agenda, if you look at the items on the agenda, if you're here to speak to any of those, the first opportunity for public comment is about any items on the agenda. And then if you look further down on the agenda, we have four scheduled public hearings tonight. So if you are here to speak on the Edmund Avenue project, or the service provision fees, or the Uptown Business Improvement District, or special assessment, those are specific public hearings that we have scheduled, and I will open those up a little bit later on. And if you're here to speak on one of those, you can come up at that time. And then the end of the meeting is where we just have open public comment on anything that is on your heart or mind. So I'll open up this first opportunity for public comment, and these are on agenda items. And so we ask you to do a couple things. We ask you to come forward, speak in the microphone. We ask you to share your name and the city you live in. But can you also, my new city clerk will remind me, can you also sign in to the sheet that is on the table over by the wall? So this is really just an opportunity for us to make sure that we have your name and everything spelled right in the minutes. So we ask that you do that. And if you come up to speak multiple times, you can just sign up once on that sheet. Okay, so, looks like Scott wants to speak. And Scott, when you're done speaking, can you make sure you sign on that sheet?
I just did.
Oh, you did?
I did.
Thank you. You know, you know this, the process.
Yes, my name is Scott Atchison, and I've been here multiple times. I want to thank the commissioners who said something positive today about the need for an information center downtown. But I'm here to speak on Committee of the Holes Number Two and Four, the resolution approving the Downtown Development Authority budget and the Downtown Improvement District budgets. Part of my mind says you need to put them on the table, take them off the table, don't approve their budgets, until they put a couple hundred thousand dollars in there to build an information center for the Convention and Visitors Bureau to run. Take them off the table. I mean, this is, I'm gonna be real brief tonight. On the way here, I was riding my scooter around. Wolverine Worldwide is having their global brand conference at DeVos Place. So what does that mean? The hotels are full, the DeVos Place is doing great, and they all walked over to 20 Monroe Live. What a missed opportunity to show what we really have with an information center. You know, and it would have been great for the Fifth Third Riverbank Run when we had thirty, forty thousand people downtown. Every day it needs to be open. And I hope that you people will try to set up a meeting with some city staff, the DDA, DGRI, Convention and Visitors Bureau staff, you know, and, you know, all these little things. This booth would have been helpful for the Riverbank Run. You know, the wedding, and here comes festival. Another, you know, how many fifty thousand people downtown for that information center? That's all I'm gonna say today. I hope, Mayor, that you're gonna set the meeting with all the DDA, DGRI, all of them. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, others who wish to be heard?
Good evening, Robert Metzger. I actually live in East Grand Rapids, but I just spend most of my time at 312 Prospect Avenue Northeast. I'm here to address the Vacation of Prospect Northeast, Agenda Item C5. We're also blessed tonight to have one of the two original developers of 312 Prospect Northeast. At that time, the Kimberly Apartments, back in nineteen sixty-three, and that would be Ms. Shirley Metzger. I've addressed this commission on this item twice before, and I did so at the open comments at the end of the meeting because the cameras were off and the public had left. And I did so because I thought it was the right thing to do and out of respect and courtesy. Since we last spoke, my legal team has filed a temporary injunction to vacate, on the vacate, against GVSU of Prospect Northeast to accelerate the process. That was filed on May seventeenth. That filing was a week late because after my deposition, opposing counsel had requested that my counsel hold off on the injunction so that he could confer with his client, GVSU, prior to a settlement discussion. Eight hours later, the construction crews took possession of the street in dispute. Also during that deposition, opposing counsel made clear that they have nothing on me, and their only strategy is attempted to fame me and assassinate my character. Which I really don't care. I know, and the people that know me know. So good luck with that. That said, I hear all the times, all the time from these parties that they're trying to be good neighbors. And I ask this commission, are these the actions of a good neighbor? I'm here tonight to ask the commission to table Agenda Item C5 and delay action for three reasons. First, I apologize to this commission the last time I spoke because I'm a take-responsibility kind of guy. And I wanted to believe that I had judged the commission too harshly on the decision for the Signal at Prospect in Michigan. And at best, the horrific mistake made in community engagement was an honest one. And that this commission erred unintentionally disenfranchising myself and my neighbors from the process. That community project, community engagement process completed, and then an uncommunicated relocation of the parking ramp from north of the expressway took place to the south side of the expressway, changing the character and substance of the original vacation request substantially. Secondly, I've been requesting traffic studies since January sixteenth. To date, I still have nothing. Traffic signal warrants are required by federal guidelines in the manual on uniform traffic control devices. And traffic impact studies are considered best practices according to the Michigan Department of Transportation. The City of Grand Rapids has a fiduciary obligation and responsibility to protect the safety of the citizens of this city. More importantly, the taxpaying citizens of this city.
Thank you. I'm sorry your time is up. Do you have something in writing that you want to share with us?
I can leave this with you.
You are welcome to.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hello, welcome. This is my first time, so if I'm a little nervous, please forgive me. My name is Corey Anderson, and I represent Steeple Town Neighborhood Services, and specifically the Job Start Program. And I'm actually here just to say thank you. I wanted to give you guys an overview of how important that particular program is that falls under the neighborhood investment plans and projects. We are able to take young men of color between the ages of eighteen and twenty-four that come to us with specific barriers and help them begin to retrain the way that they think about themselves, about community, and about employment. We're able to also provide employment while they're doing that to help them get ready for what we call sustainable employment. They go through our program. Could be ninety days, could be a year. We always say whatever it takes to get that person to that point where they're really ready to move forward with their life. And so I just wanted to come and just give you an overview of how we're doing. We're doing excellent. We're really helping guys in our community that are coming to us by the numbers. We're able to provide social enterprise for them to go out and get the work, as well as the cognitive restructuring piece, where the guys come to us, and sometimes they have barriers that are from their past that prevent them from being successful in the workplace, whether it's transportation, whether it's housing, whether it's the neighborhood that they came from. Our job is to help them think differently about those things and provide opportunities to be exposed to different things. Hence the reason why I brought them here is because this exposes them to city government, how it works, and what that looks like. And so for me, again, thank you. That grant has been phenomenal. And obviously for it to be continued means that I can continue to do what I do and what I'm passionate about. I don't need three minutes, that's all I need to say.
Thank you, Corey, and thank you for your work.
Absolutely.
Appreciate it.
Oh, I do, I have a minute, fourteen.
Yes, yes you do.
These are, these are my guys, and they get their own three minutes. So I just wanted to just tell you about them.
Hello, and welcome.
Hello, my name is DeAndre Jones. I'm a part of the Steeple Town Program, Job Start. I would like to say that the program is very good. Personally, I've been able to pay some of the, pay for some of the things that I've done in the past in far as legal troubles or just being a young adult, just thinking I could do whatever I can. And I just appreciate you guys funding us and continues to give us the opportunity to give back to the community, which is something that's very important to me. I spent nine months of my life volunteering at the Grand Rapids Dream Center, and I didn't ask for anything but my respect as a human being. And I've heard several stories that were very empowering and probably would bring you to tears if you've actually heard what people have been through. As far as the Steeple Town Program, I've actually been able to knock down cabinets and things like that, just work on houses, and different skills that I would never thought that I would have had. So now when I walk inside my mom's house, I know exactly what to do. She needed that done. I just appreciate the, just, just the program, just to see. It actually gives me a chance to use my leadership skills. I feel like I'm a very good leader, and I've been told that many times. And I've actually seen my leadership skills and what I can do and how I can move people to get the job done efficiently when they don't, when they kind of listen to the coach. I'm kind of the Jordan about it. So I really appreciate it, and it really does mean a lot to me. I got to do the taste of West Grand Rapids, which was a great experience to try some of the different foods. Like I've tried duck, which I've never thought I'd, like, I've seen ducks, but I never thought I would eat a duck. So it was a different experience. So I definitely appreciate just me being an African-American male in today's society and understanding the things going on. I really appreciate that program being on the west side, which there's a lot of African-Americans when they're looking for jobs. But programs like this, they're starting to reel in in several different, it's just not African-Americans, it's several different people of ethnicity there working. I just see how nobody, nobody's ever gotten into an argument about color or anything. So I just thank you guys for letting that be a business and establishment and letting people go there. It's actually an award they give from Steeple Town, and it was a woman that won it. And it was very inspiring, like she had like a daughter, and they, she was going through the preschool or whatever. So just the several programs that just branch from her. I just thank you guys for that, and that'll be all.
Thank you, DeAndre. Good to have you here.
Hello, everyone. My name is Antoine Perkins. I'm very nervous right now, to be honest. But I graduated from Steeple Town, got my culinary arts over at Kitchen Sage. It's been a very helpful program. It helped me grow with myself. I understand myself a lot better, understand my character and what I want in life. I'm gonna be a model, I will be on TV with you guys. So I'm very confident in myself. I have grown in a lot of areas, my anger. They helped me out, Corey helped me out, you know, cope with a lot of things. If it's just life skills in general, he helped me out. Nathan Bills, he recently passed. He was a big inspiration on my life. And it was, it's just a great experience. It's a place where I advise anybody from eighteen to twenty-four to come. Just give it a shot. If it doesn't work, come back again, you know, just give it a shot again. Thank you for the time. I know it's not three minutes, but thank you.
Thank you, Antoine. And you did just fine. And I'm very proud of you.
Thank you.
My name is Bonnie Burke. I live at 643 Sly in Grand Rapids. Some of you were serving on this board when I came before the commission in March of 2014. I asked that you consider limiting your terms of service by putting it on the ballot to let the citizens decide if this was the best governance for Grand Rapids. You were not interested. Rena Baker and I spearheaded the drive to let the citizens of Grand Rapids vote on whether or not to limit the amount of time a citizen can serve as a commissioner and mayor. With the help of several people, we went door to door, gathering over ten thousand signatures of registered city voters. Many of these citizens thought that Grand Rapids already had term limits. In November of 2014, voters of Grand Rapids overwhelmingly passed this change to the city charter. The current language reads, "Section 9.2 Term Limitations." No person shall be eligible for election as a city commissioner of any ward if that person has served as a city commissioner of any ward for two terms. The same goes for mayor. However, a person is eligible to be a ward city commissioner for two terms and an additional two terms for mayor. Serving more than two terms of a year, serving more than two years of a term to which some other person was elected shall be considered a term. This section applies to the positions of city ward commissioner and of mayor. This verbiage outlines that despite how a person serves on the commission, there is a cap as to the number of terms they are able to serve. The term is defined as either an elected four-year term or being appointed to serve to finish out a term with a duration of over half of the term left. They are eligible to serve for two terms. After serving two terms, they are ineligible to serve on the commission period. I'm dismayed that this board is now considering appointing former Third Ward Commissioner Jim White to fill a vacancy created when David Allen stepped down. It is clearly prohibited by the language adopted by the city charter after the fourteen election. The fact that this board is even considering asking a former commissioner who served two terms plus finished a term to which he was initially appointed is disturbing to me and should be to the voters of Grand Rapids. This tactic to circumvent the law smacks of desperation for power and control. It is the very reason people in this city, state, and nation overwhelmingly support term limits. Serving the people of Grand Rapids is the role to which you are elected. You are not elected to a career. Once all of you have served two terms as commissioner and/or mayor, you are ineligible to serve in those capacities again. The citizens of Grand Rapids are prepared to move forward with a lawsuit against the City of Grand Rapids should you choose to proceed with this appointment. It is clearly in violation of the city charter. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mrs. Burke. All right, others who wish to be heard? Mr. Townsend, you want to come up? I saw you in line.
I do not have to come up. She said that better than I could ever say.
Okay, all right, thank you.
She, she had what I was saying.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Miller, you coming up? Okay.
Good evening, fellow citizens. This is the House of the People. Watchdog Miller, reporting. Welcome to Simon and the Grease Square, where veteran city bus routes, black and Catholic, are still banned. First, some housekeeping, full endorsement of what Ms. Burke and Rena Davis have, so Davis has done over the years. Who's gonna write up a position paper myself for tonight? First, some housekeeping. The document titled tonight is, what you have before you is, I screwed up the C, "Civilizing Veterans Notice." And next, on the menace, a US veteran was totally obstructed getting over here on the first due to illegal aliens' march, bellowing in Mexico or something, across Monroe on the, before the meeting the first. Tried to just grab a coffee somewhere, and look, I was gonna be obstructed by police barricades on, across Pearl to grab a coffee somewhere. We are not allowed on Monroe, you know? This is going on since 2004. Why are illegal aliens allowed to march? Maybe close to four hundred. When our, my inbound bus, inbound bus for that last city hall meeting was detoured way over the cherry. Normally Spanish, we don't get any farther north than Fulton. So that's better than us. Letting illegal aliens march through our downtown is just more sanctuary city sissiness run amok. On the, well, I think I'll get back on, on this one, let's see. Again, sir clerk, no dollar figures. You know, that was a problem with Kamala Harris, Mick Mullen, in her stretch here. Let's go it out. No dollar figures. C, two, six, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen. D, two and three, no dollar figures. And then on some appointments, there are, nobody is listed, you know? Who are these people? On the outreach on March third, where I was threatened with arrest by five city hall policemen, including the ranking officer that Saturday, Sergeant Postma. I'm requesting that you pursue that matter. And Madam Attorney, among the items where you could charge Ms. Stout and her co-conspirators, these are federal color-ups for federal dollars, fifty-six million on the, on the Laker line lunacy, conspiracy to cover up ethnic discrimination. A trash today factor, public square. When you move city hall meeting over to GVSU, it's a public square for the day.
Thank you, Mr. Miller, your time's up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, others who wish to be heard?
Hello, my name is Martha Cooper. I'm from Grand Rapids. So I would like to say that I was not one of those folks that was in favor of term limits. But I do believe that the appointment to fill David Allen's seat should not necessarily be an appointment to someone that you all know. But if there is a method that you've used in other wards to fill appointments, that I believe that that is the process that should be used to fill that seat, rather than an appointment of someone who's been there before. That is not about that person at all. It's really about giving the same respect and procedure to the folks that live in that ward so that they feel confident that they're, that they have not been treated differently than any other area of the city. So that's one of the things I wanted to say. I also would like to, for the record, say that I was also at the Kosatcha March that day. I, I'm also one of those people that would feel a little differently. Apparently sanctuary cities have not had their money cut or anything like that. I've been disappointed that for the equal rights treatment or the equal service treatment, that it did not include police. Sometimes I almost think there were more police and horses, too, at that march. What I will say, because I want it on the record, is that it was not all illegal aliens because there were plenty of my compatriots, my color, people that were legal. We were all standing for the rights of these people, and we were using our free speech rights to do so. So I wanted to have that on the record. But I especially want to be out here saying that if you have one method for one area ward, then I want that method used in this, for the sake, for the next ward if you're replacing a commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Martha. All right, others who wish to be heard?
My name is Marion Barrera Young. I'm with Baxter Neighborhood Association. I'm not talking about anything else but the march. And we have to stop and think. All of us weren't here when the Indians were here. So if anybody should be complaining, it should be them. Everybody should have freedom of speech. People come into the country for different, for opportunity. And everybody got on board with that march. Like the young lady said that just left, it was everybody there marching. And people, if we have marches for the Ku Klux Klan and everybody else, so why not have people with a purpose of unity be able to march in a legal manner? And police are there, yeah, because they want to protect people because there are people that don't agree with different things, and they're there for safety and security of our city. So I would welcome any other marches that were dealing with people getting their rights. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, others who wish to be heard?
Two things. Before we continue, I would ask that nobody use a reference, these people or those people. And when you make a reference to Native Americans, please do not say Indian because I do have a Native American background, and it's offensive. That's it.
Thank you. All right, anyone else who wishes to speak on something that we're voting on tonight? Oh, that's okay. You can speak when you get to the microphone. Hi, welcome.
Hey. My name is Thomas, and I am a tenant at 312 Prospect Avenue. I'm also here to talk about the vacation. I guess there's just a couple points I'd like to bring up. From my understanding, it's typical for a vacation proceeding to take place by, one, there's a community engagement event where it's open to the public before the city commission takes action on it. Now, this is step one, before it goes to the circuit court. Now, my understanding is that at the community engagement event, the placards that were sent out were for Belfast, not the Heritage Hill area that's actually affected. Now, the other part of it is, this is the packet that was produced for the community engagement event last summer. And the actual map shows the parking structure all the way on the other side of the expressway. So the community literally did not know what was going on and never got a chance to explore it and what it might mean. In addition, upon further investigation, it seems that none of the best practice studies were done. There was no traffic study performed, and there was no signal performed. These are things that are normally done, especially in a high-density area like Michigan and Prospect, because literally this is the entrance to our city. And it is, and it is at the cusp of the residential area of Heritage Hill. It's a very important area, and it just seems like this is being rushed, and it hasn't been properly vetted yet. So I'm actually absolutely in favor of taking the time to do this right and make sure that it's going to help our community not be a setback and basically add to the congestion. It's no secret that traveling down Michigan Avenue is, it's tough. So that's all I have. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, others who wish to be heard? Okay, scene. I'm gonna go ahead and close that opportunity for public comment. And that will take us to approval of our minutes from our last meeting, which was on May first. Can I get a motion? All right, commissioners, any questions, comments, additions? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, next that will take us to petitions and communications, and we have eight items tonight.
Communication from Hugh Ingles regarding their resignation from the Historic Preservation Commission.
That is referred to our Committee on Appointments.
Communication from Alita Kelly regarding their resignation from the Urban Agricultural Committee.
That is referred to Committee on Appointments.
Communication received from Mike Kelvey expressing support for the flags located at Brandon Steakhouse and Grill.
That is received and filed.
Communication received from Scott Atchison regarding an information center for downtown Grand Rapids.
That is received and filed.
Communication received entitled "The Total Destruction of Our Fine City."
That is received and filed.
Communication received from Ken Miguel Cipriano expressing opposition to the use of city funds for Art Prize.
That is received and filed.
Communication received from Adam Tonno Williams expressing support for the proposed resoning of Hubert Avenue.
That is received and filed.
And communication received from Adam Tonno Williams expressing opposition to the sponsorship amount for Art Prize.
And that is also received and filed. And that will next take us to reports of city officers. We have three items tonight.
Comptroller's report for the period of April 25, 2018, through May 15, 2018, in the amount of thirty-two million, six hundred and twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-five dollars and thirty-six cents.
That is received and filed.
Treasurer's report for the period of April 24, 2018, through May 14, 2018.
That is also received and filed.
And the city clerk submitted copies of the Police and Fire Retirement System Actuarial Evaluation for the year ending December 31, 2017.
And that is received and filed. All right, next that will take us to our consent agenda and our reports on standing committees. So our consent agenda is a list of items that we talked about this morning in one of our standing committee meetings where there was a unanimous vote. So with one voice vote tonight, we will adopt those items. So can I get a motion?
Some of us. Support.
So commissioners, questions, comments about the consent agenda?
I just would like to say that I-
I'd just sort of like to say that I'm thrilled with, I'm not on Community Development Committee, but I'm thrilled with our contract with Camiros to do the South Division Area-Specific Plan. I just want to give a shout-out to Angelica for her great work on that event on Sunday. There were over a thousand people. The community made a thousand tamales, and Ms. Dane was there serving food, and huge thanks to the Planning Department. Courtney and Suzanne were there with their team, and that board that's going to be leading that process, it was a really great first step, and I couldn't be more thrilled with our selection of Camiros to lead us in that work.
Great. Commissioner?
I would like to second that. Thanks and appreciation, and it was astounding. We learned about this at Community Development this morning. Had I been free on Sunday, I would have come, but I had another engagement, I had to do a speech. But, thank you, I'd love to get to know you better. You are a phenomenal organizer, I have a lot of respect for what you pulled off. Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions or comments? I'm going to ask maybe our interim city manager to speak a little bit about the Community Development, item number five, not being in CD this morning. I am curious, and I don't know if others are as well, if, kind of a little background on this, maybe even touch on the question around traffic study and how a decision was made and...
Sure. Be happy to. So, going from memory without looking at the items, so Prospect Vacation is actually the part of Prospect that's north of Michigan, not the area that's south of Michigan. And so, it's being vacated to make way for a significant parking ramp that's being constructed by Grand Valley jointly with Spectrum Industries or Spectrum Hospital. And, in order to make the parking ramp work and also provide pads for future development, so Grand Valley has a building plan to be next to the CHS building that's on the corner right now.
That will front Michigan.
That will front Michigan. And then, there'll be a development pad available for probably used by Spectrum in the future. So, in order to make that happen, we have to relocate utilities, and the developers are taking care of that. And, we have to make Prospect, vacate Prospect to make way for the ramp. And so, as that was being done, we did do a traffic study, and we looked at traffic in the entire region, including Hastings Street and areas in Belknap, and how that would all work together, and determined that we could achieve the proper level of service if Hastings connect work created, and we are making plans to do that. So, there were studies, there are traffic studies, there are traffic studies having to do with the BRT, traffic studies having to do with the location of the ramp in that location, and the utility work is proceeding now.
Commissioner Jones or Kelly, do you want to speak to this? I know both of you have been really actively engaged in this over the last, actually, couple of years. So, did you want to add anything?
Yes, a little background. We were able to work with Grand Valley to put in place a memorandum of understanding after they took some housing down in the Belknap area, and we had a lot of input from the Belknap community and from groups like Homes For All concerned about the loss of affordable housing, and they've agreed to build and replace that, the same amount, when they finish one of their buildings. And then, shortly after that, they met with Belknap, and then we got involved with that, too, because we represent the second ward, because they wanted to take down some additional housing to build the parking ramp. And so, out of that, and those many discussions, which were difficult in light of the fact that we're doing everything we can to save and preserve and even add affordable housing in the city, we were able to get them to meet with Spectrum, and knowing that Spectrum is decommissioning an older ramp on the north side of Michigan, and in a very unusual agreement, they came together and said, instead of having two separate ramps built there, they would build one together. So, it's clearly there is lots of traffic on Michigan Street, and Mayor, I know you would be aware of this, too, because you work in the Rapid, there are some plans to work with Spectrum to stop having so many vans go up and down the street and begin to use Bus 19 and make it free, and travel up and down Michigan Street to transport not only Spectrum folks, but also people who want to move back and forth to work or to get downtown. So, we've been working on several ways to try to alleviate the traffic concerns there because it does get jammed up, especially around rush hour, five o'clock or so, five to six, and we're all in Grand Rapids, used to be, we're getting from point A to point B pretty quickly. And one of those, Spectrum has been working with the city to incentivize their employees to take the Silver Line. So, there are efforts underway with Spectrum to help provide other options besides building more parking ramp space and keeping more automobiles out of that area. So, I don't know, Commissioner, if you want to add to that, because you were real instrumental in your...
No, you covered it pretty well. The one thing I will add, though, is that the original plan was to build the parking structure in the middle of a neighborhood in Belknap Lookout, and so you had Belknap Lookout community that was very, very active in the process, and were very pleased to hear that the parking structure was not going to be in their neighborhood. So, again, I know that there's been a lot that's obviously happening on Michigan Avenue, and I think that, to the credit of the very organized efforts of the folks of Belknap Lookout, there was significant engagement with the neighborhood, and I think we feel pretty good about the end result of having a parking structure that's meeting the needs of institutions, but also for our neighbors who are very pleased that they're getting new affordable housing as well as a parking structure not in their backyard.
Yeah. Thank you. Commissioners, any questions about that?
Mayor, I also believe that this is a vacation of utility easements in a previously vacated portion of Prospect. So...
Say that again, so everyone is clear.
Yep, sorry. So, the item says that actually this, on November 10, 1992, in a proceeding of the city commission, the city approved a consent resolution in connection with the vacation of Prospect, a portion of Prospect. So, we're relinquishing easements in that portion of Prospect.
Okay, that's clear. Thanks.
It was already vacated.
Okay, thank you. All right, Commissioners, any other questions or comments? All right, I'll call the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, next up will take us to items that have been removed from consent, and we have three items before us tonight. The first one is a resolution approving funding awards for CDBG, home, and JAG programs, and submission of the fiscal year 2019 annual action plan. Support? All right, Commissioner Lanier, you want to tell us about this?
Absolutely. So, as we discussed this morning, so I'll try and be brief. We had allocated, let's see, where are the numbers here on here? We had allocated $3,441,303 for CDBG, and for home, we had $987,531. And allocating those dollars based on last year's numbers, but now we have since heard back from HUD, and they've increased CDBG by $317,279, and home by $423,061. And, we have had open comment period since March 23 to get feedback on the plan that we have, and I'm happy to see, I know we've had a few people during the public hearing that was on April 10, but I'm also happy to see Mr. Corey Anderson, Mr. DeAndre Jones, and Mr. Antoine Perkins coming this evening to share their experience with the program frequently. I'm requesting that from Connie Bohach when she's sharing this information, to not just bring the agencies and organizations, but the people who are impacted by it. And so, I'm very appreciative to see you gentlemen this evening and to hear firsthand how this program has impacted you. So, just wanted to give that update, and then also add that with those increased dollars, we allocated funding for home repair services for their minor home repair program, ICCF's Eastern Elementary Project, and Dwelling Place Pine Avenue Apartments. And then, there was also, across the board, an increase to neighborhood associations. So, in anticipation of there being more funds, we had those projects in mind to fund within the increased funding. So, yeah, that's it.
Okay, great. Thank you. Good summary. Commissioners, any questions or comments? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Any abstentions? It carries. All right, next we have a resolution approving the Emergency Solutions Grants Program Funding Award.
So moved.
Support.
All right, Commissioner O'Connor, you want to tell us about this?
Yeah, this is just a resolution approving the local awards for the use of the FY 2018 Emergency Solution Grant Program, and authorizing the execution of contractual agreements with the award recipients. The resolution also allows the submission of the FY 2019 Annual Action Plan to the Department of HUD. The planned use of the ESG funds is outlined in the Annual Action Plan, which identifies each project and the respective outcomes to be achieved between July 2018 and July 30, 2019.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, any questions, comments about this? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And any abstentions?
Aye.
Thank you, it carries. All right, next up will take us to our third resolution tonight, and that is a resolution approving a second amendment to the agreement with JLL for the 201 Market Avenue Southwest and related city-owned properties project and analysis.
So moved?
Support.
All right, Commissioner Kelly, you want to tell us about this?
Yes. The agreement that we had with JLL expired on May 15, 2018, so it's just expired. So, this actually just extends the agreement through next year, so they continue with their work regarding locating city property off of this site at 201 Market, and exploring the cost of that, and utilities moved and utilities provided. So, this really is just an extension of time, but not an allocation of monies.
Great, thank you. All right, Commissioners, any questions or comments? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
It carries. All right, next up will take us to our ordinances to be adopted tonight. We have three ordinances before us tonight, and I will start with the first one. First one is an ordinance amending section 4.3 of ordinance 2016-88, establishing establishment of a new classification called Parking Violators Checker 2, and update of ranges for parking violations, both for Checker 1 and Parking Violations Lead Worker. Can I get...
Support.
Thank you.
So, don't be alarmed, we're not hiring more people to give out parking tickets.
Thank you for saying that, Commissioner.
But, we do, Mary Beth and her team has been doing a lot of research, there's a lot of turnover in these positions, and by adding this new classification, it's going to allow us to retain more people and give them a chance to move up in the department. And so, these classifications are important for making that happen.
Great, thank you. Commissioners, any questions about that? All right, and this is a roll-call vote tonight, so I'll turn to our city clerk.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Yes.
Commissioner Ruppert?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Lanier?
Yes.
Mayor Bliss?
Yes. All right, next up will take us to our second ordinance tonight, and that's an ordinance to amend section 4.4 of ordinance 2016-88 with the establishment of a new classification called Skilled Trade Aid.
So moved.
Support.
All right, Commissioner Jones, you want to tell us about this?
Yes, Mayor, the work with the departments on the development of a full core solution on the skilled trade staffing composition issues incorporates the establishment of another learn-to-earn entry-level position in which candidates who do not possess a skilled trades background can be taught various skilled trades and operational areas as an entry point, and then be groomed for a particular skilled trade focus area of need and aptitude. It is a continuation of our Grow Our Own recruitment strategy to access potential applicants who have not been exposed or supported, to go into the skilled trade occupations who desire to pursue such trade professions.
All right. Commissioners, any questions about that? It's a step in the right direction, I feel like we've been talking about this for a while, so it's good to see you come forward. This is also a roll-call vote tonight.
Commissioner Ruppert?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Lanier?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Yes.
Mayor Bliss?
Yes. All right, next up will take us to our third ordinance tonight. This is an ordinance amending section 1 of the Budget Ordinance 2017-36 for fiscal year 2018, and this is amendment number 20.
So moved.
Support.
All right, Commissioner Jones, you want to tell us about this?
Yes, Mayor, this morning in Fisco, we had a couple of items for the budget ordinance. One was a grant carryover for a SAMSA grant that was provided to the 61st District Court. Another was a request to appropriate $25,000 for the Michigan Justice Training Fund. Another one was receiving a grant, accepting a grant from the National Recreation and Park Association for $40,000 for the city. And, there was also a Financial Management System Fund. Fiscal Department is requesting to appropriate, funds retain earnings in the amount of half a million dollars to support the Kronos Timekeeping Contract, as well as CGI project closeouts. And so, those were the items that were presented, and there was no change in the contingent balance.
Great, thank you. Commissioners, any questions? All right, this is a roll-call vote tonight.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Lanier?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Yes.
Commissioner Ruppert?
Yes.
Mayor Bliss?
Yes, and can I get a motion to give this immediate effect?
So moved.
Support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It carries. All right, next up will take us to city commission resolutions, and we have one resolution that's been added on, and this is Shawn Bagley versus City of Grand Rapids, and this is a resolution approving a settlement. Oh, you know what? I need a motion to suspend the rules.
So moved.
Can I get a motion to suspend the rules?
So moved.
So, for all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, so rules are now suspended, and as I just said, this isn't added on for a settlement. Can I get a motion for that?
So moved.
Support.
All right, Commissioner Kelly, you want to talk to us about this?
Yes. On May 1, 2018, the litigation matter of Shawn Bagley versus the City of Grand Rapids, a workman's compensation case was presented to the city commission in executive session. Settlement of this matter was recommended and approved in the amount of $87,058.96.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, any questions? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It carries. All right, next up will take us to our public hearings tonight. We have four public hearings. So, for each public hearing, we will open up that public hearing. I will have a staff person come up and tee it up and give us some information about it, and then I'll open it up. So, if you're here to speak on that item, you'll have an opportunity. Same rules apply for public hearings. We'll provide three minutes. We ask that you say your name and the city that you live in, and to sign the sign-in sheet over there so that we get your name spelled correctly in our minutes. So, I will move to our first public hearing tonight. This is a public hearing regarding the rezoning of 1046, 1052, 1058 Edmund Avenue Northeast, and 742 and 754 Hubert Avenue Northeast to TNLRD, and that stands for Traditional Neighborhood Low Density Residential. And we'll start with our planning director, Suzanne Schultz, and then I'll open it up for public comment.
This is a relatively simple request. This property has an interesting history in that it was owned by the City of Grand Rapids and then turned over to the land bank. There are parcels within this grouping that are considered pretty undevelopable due to slope. It's along the Carrier Creek watershed area, and there's speculation that at some point during Green Garden Rapids, when you identified potential areas, that this was a sensitive area, and so it was zoned as open space, which does not allow for residential construction. There is an interested buyer for these parcels, and as part of the rezoning request to allow for low-density residential, this would allow the construction of a home, which is what the applicant is seeking, and he's asking for one home. The challenge is these are platted lots, and to develop all of them would require an extensive expenditure of funds to be able to run public water and sewer to those locations. So, we believe that there's only really the two parcels that are in the northwest portion of this property that are actually developable for residential use without having to do extensive outlay for infrastructure. So, there was discussion at the planning commission about whether or not all parcels needed to be rezoned to low-density residential, or only those parcels that could be potentially developed by the person seeking to buy these parcels. So, that was the question. There was concern expressed by some members of the neighborhood, there was also some who were in support. This is a very interesting area. We have a couple of these that are owned by the land bank, and these batches of property that are very challenged from a development perspective. So, the public hearing is really to try to get additional feedback, to inform the commission's decision on the extent of the rezoning.
Great, thank you. Good explanation. So, Suzanne, can I ask one question for the public utilities? Would the cost... Would the cost of that then be borne by the property owner?
It would.
To extend those?
Yes.
Which makes it prohibitive, I would guess.
It does, and we do have other locations like this in the city where we've got challenging, and that's really why they have never been developed. I mean, they're just sitting there. The challenges with running infrastructure there, a public street, all of that's very expensive, and for the number of units that you would get off of just several parcels, there's no way that the numbers work.
Okay, thank you.
So I have another question.
Oh, okay, Commissioner Kelly.
Suzanne, sorry, because of course you were so intimately involved with Greenback Grand Rapids. So I tried to get back there and figure out where this was, and other than generally, I wasn't able to. It's difficult to even access. So tell us a little bit about the system of greenways, that what might possibly be done with this, and would this interrupt that system in some way?
It does not interrupt it. It sits kind of higher than Carrier Creek. Carrier Creek does have a trail that runs in that area. And so, we do have in our zoning ordinance protections for steep slopes. For example, you can't develop on a parcel that has a greater than 20% slope. We did have Environmental Services look at this site for sensitivity. They were concerned around the slope, but felt that the proposed development with the single house closer towards the top, the northern portion of these properties, would not significantly impact that slope, and so that that would be okay. The driveway would be coming off of Edmund, and there is possibility for a private drive to extend to that house.
So, and we're certain if the zoning changed, that it would only be one house?
That's the request. So that's the challenge with the rezoning, is that once you have approved the rezoning, anything within that zone district that is allowed by right could be pursued by an applicant. So if it's zoned as open space, then we don't allow residential structures in the open space districts. So that was where the question came from, is if it was limited to two parcels for the rezoning to LDR versus the entirety of all of the parcels that are being requested.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions for Suzanne before we open it up for public comment? All right, so, thank you Suzanne.
Thank you.
So if you are here tonight to speak on this issue, your opportunity is now, so you can come forward. And again, you can come up to the podium. We ask you to speak in the microphone, share your name and the city that you live in. So if you're here to speak specifically about this rezoning, now's an opportunity to come forward. All right, seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close that opportunity for public comment, and we'll move on to our next one. So the next public hearing is a public hearing considering the fiscal year 2019 service provision fees to be effective July 1, 2018. So I'll start with Jeff. Ask him, our CFO, to come on up and share with us some information about this. And then if you're here tonight to speak about the fees, after Jeff is done, I'll open that up for public comment.
Good evening. So policy 700-10 outlines departments to submit their fees annually with the budget process to support their operations and recover their costs for the fiscal year coming up FY 19. These were presented to City Commission at our last meeting, and part of the process is to establish a public hearing, which is scheduled for tonight. So here we are.
All right. Commissioners, any questions? All right, thank you Jeff. So if you're here tonight to speak about the service provision fees, now's an opportunity to come forward. Again, the same rules apply. Anyone want to talk about fees?
Does anybody want to tell us what the fees apply to?
Jeff, do you want to speak to that?
Thank you.
So as part of the budget packet, there's probably, boy, they're really tiny print, because there's a whole list of them. So if you go on the agenda item, there's probably, I don't even want to guess on the number, but there are fees from anything from business license fees, to parks and recs fees, to cemetery fees, any of the fees that are used throughout the city for services.
So that would have to do with?
Do you want to come up and speak? Just so everyone, if you have questions, other people in the audience may as well. So if you want to share those, then it'll give Jeff an opportunity to respond. They're good questions.
Actually, my name's Martha, I'm Grand Rapids. My question is, as I understand fees, I think about, is it the parking fees? Is it the fees for attending the parks and things that we have? You all know what you're speaking about, this gentleman also does. I guess what I'm saying is, could those fees be enumerated in such a way that the community listening can understand which fees are going up that will affect us?
Yeah, that's a great question. And we did, actually, this is, I think, the second or third year that we do have the fees broken down, and we have them sectioned off in, so that we can easily identify which ones are being, which are new, which ones are being proposed to increase, which ones are staying the same or decreasing. So Jeff, I don't know if you want to speak to that. It is all encompassing, it's kind of like an omnibus bill. And so, and it covers all of the fees in the different departments and their fees for service. So Jeff, do you want to elaborate a little bit?
It's hard to have public comment if the public doesn't know what those are, and I have to go look them up. How can I comment?
Yeah, so we, so part of the public hearing, we do publish them, and they are part of the budget that's presented to the full commission back in April, and we have them available on the website, and we do try to make them available. But you're right, it's hard to get the word out sometimes.
On the table for the people that are here.
Yeah, that's good feedback. Yep, that's a good suggestion. Yeah, you're welcome. So Jeff, do you want to elaborate a little bit more?
Yeah, so as you said, we divide them into different categories. I mean, there's building inspection fees, as I said, there's fire department fees, there's fees for a lot of the services we provide here at the city. And we break them out by different categories, and there's categories of no change in fees, fees that are changed by more than the cost of living, new fees, and then fees that are not 100% cost recovery, and there's explanations in there of why those different categories exist. So, and it is a substantial list, and it's very tiny print, because there's tons of fees to try to fit on a piece of paper, but we can try to have some copies available for future years. No, the vast majority are not increasing, so.
All right, thank you Jeff. All right, so it looks like Mr. Miller wants to speak. If you want to speak on fees, then this public comment period is open, public hearing, I should say, is open.
Indeed it is. I'll talk to Miller back. This is just more blank, check liberals. My basic question coming here every week, what the heck is going on? You know, fees, she's right, Citizen Martha is right, the citizens should be all listed. I also see, I think the annual caper is up tonight. In prior years, traditionally, the caper would always come through a full public hearing. This is a huge housing report. So as I said, I brought up earlier, how many items I bring up today, sir clerk, our new clerk. It's almost as bad with Comic Book Mill. But Mill, no dollar figures down there, I think that 12 items, no dollar figures. It carries on to the fee scheduling. Almost borderline racketeering. These are patterns of corrupt practices, and I back Citizen Martha for a change. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Appreciate that. All right, others who wish to be heard?
Hello, my name is Alan Clark. I'm part of a citizen organization in the City of Grand Rapids called Citizen Labs, and we've actually put on a website for all citizens who want to learn more about the budget. It's pretty easy. It has graphics that you can click on, find out where fees are coming from, where the money's going to, and it's, the website address is openbudgetgr.org. There's a lot of information there. There's also a timeline on there, so if you're interested about where we are in the budget process, how that process works, there's a ton of information there. We built it for everybody in the city, and we've had a lot of support from the city. We appreciate that by providing that preliminary budget data so that we could then put it on the website for everybody else to learn more. Thanks.
Thank you. Alan, I'm so glad you came up, and I really appreciate your work in helping us get that out to the community and get information in an easy format. And we'll make sure that we post that again, both on our website, and we'll try to disseminate it out to the community again. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Joyce Daniels. I live in Grand Rapids. I had no idea about the fees tonight, but I wanted to get on the record that whatever the fees that went up, with minimum wage being the way it is, no fees should go up. That's just my opinion tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Joyce. All right, others who wish to be heard?
Hi, my name is Ladonna Norman. I also am a resident of Grand Rapids, and I had the opportunity to check out your fees. And there's hundreds. You can't simply just vote on this right now, when there are literally hundreds of fees right there. It almost does sound kind of fishy when you come up here and you only mention three to four items, but when you pull it up on the computer, it's hundreds. How do you do that to us? You guys always have a little way of sneaking in these things. You talk really quick, you say three or four things, but it's really 100 things. Hundreds and hundreds, and hundreds of things on top of hundreds of things. Get it right.
So tonight is just a public hearing, we're not voting on this. It's an opportunity to get feedback, and this is part of the budget process. Every year we review fees, so we're not voting tonight. This is really just an opportunity to get public comment. We'll be taking continued public comment up until we vote on the budget on June 12th. So I just want to let you know that if you had, if you have additional comments, if you want to take some time to learn more about the fees or get more information, we're happy to provide that, and you still have time to provide public comment on this.
Russell Homestead, West Side. On the fees, when I was just perusing, very small print, but the FOIA request fees that are in there, there are a lot of them that are not specified, and I understand that they may vary, but the ones that are not specified seem to be varied underneath the, a lot of them by, I believe by the wording of this, by the chief of police. Is that correct? In the wording under that? I could be wrong, but that's from the budget, that's what it says. But I don't know if that has to do with how FOIA requests work, but if there could be more clarification on that, I'd really appreciate it. So that the public knows that those, that they might be on the hook when they're requesting those types of things. Thank you very much.
Yeah, you're welcome. That's good feedback, and I'll have our city attorney follow up. All right, others who wish to be heard on fees? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close that public hearing, and that'll be referred, as I said, back to the committee of the whole. All right, next that will take us to our third public hearing, and this is City Commission to hear appeals on the 2018 Uptown Business Improvement District Special Assessment Rule 8730. And we'll start this public hearing with Scott Ingersen, and then I'll open it up for public comment after Scott gives us a briefing of what this is related to.
Good evening. This evening, the City Commission is sitting as a board review to hear appeals of charges levied on the 2018 Uptown Business Improvement Special Assessment Rule Number 8730. The charges on the special assessment rule total $101,418.15. Enhanced services benefiting the assessable properties within the special assessment district include marketing, branding, streetscape maintenance, streetscape beautification, business development, and corridor management. The special assessment rule has been open for public viewing in the city assessor's office since April 30th of 2018. No appeals have been filed to date. This evening is the final opportunity to file an appeal, and appeals must be made in writing, and forms are available this evening in room 901.
Thank you. All right, so if you are here tonight to be heard on the Uptown Business Improvement District Assessment Rule, now is your opportunity to come forward. We ask that you share your name and the city that you live in, and again, you'll be given up to three minutes to speak, and then you can go and meet with Scott in 901, right?
I wish I were more educated than I am, but I believe that when the Uptown District came before I was here at a meeting, and I spoke up, and I suggested that. So I'm kind of concerned. I've been advocating for low-income housing for a while. I have a lot of attachment to it. I hear stories from neighbors, stories from people I know. I have no idea where funding's going to come from for the Affordable Housing Fund. Frankly, right now, I'm not even sure effective residents are actually going to have any impact on that fund as advisory, rather than actually being board members. But what I'm really concerned about when I see this with the Uptown Business District, I mentioned that I don't see black people that live there anymore. I mentioned it because people have been being displaced. They used to live in that neighborhood, I could not afford to live there now. So what I'm saying is that you're giving money for beautification, money for assessments, money for probably the most gentrified street in this city. And what I'm doing is I want to stand up here now, and I want to call you out directly that whatever money that you're giving to a business district that around it now people can't afford to either buy a house or rent, that you consider giving that same amount of money to the Affordable Housing Fund to deal with some of the displacement that's happened in our city. I think that's just justice. So whatever you're doing with money and giving tax breaks, those jobs are not paying enough to rent in that area, and I want you to consider the justice and the equity that I'm talking about when it comes to giving money to a gentrified area while you, I want to know what's going into the Affordable Housing Fund.
Thank you, Martha. Let me elaborate a little bit. So a special assessment district, Uptown is a corridor improvement district, and the properties within that district decided to create a corridor improvement district. And the properties, at least in Uptown, and this isn't true in all cities, the properties in Uptown decided to increase, to basically pay a fee, a special assessment on their property, to pool that money together as a district, and to invest in that district in beautification things like flowers. But we don't get to decide how they spend the money. There's a board, so there's an appointed board of people who live and work in the district, who serve on that and make a recommendation. But it's a self-assessment, so it's not, it's not a tax that we impose. It's similar to neighborhoods that come together and decide that they want, let's say, historic lighting. And so, all the property owners, let's say in my neighborhood, would say, I'm willing to pay $50 a year for 10 years on top of my taxes that I pay, to pool that together with my neighbors to have, let's say, historic lighting. That's a special assessment. So people, and that's a tool that is available to our city and to neighbors. So around Pleasant Park, the neighbors around Pleasant Park, they agreed to pay a special assessment to help pay for that park. So this special assessment is for that district, and then there's an appointed board. Commissioner, actually Commissioner Allen now serves on that board, and there's a number of other members, and they make a recommendation on how those dollars that those property owners pay, those additional dollars that they pay, the special assessment, how that is used, and it's only used in that district for things that they're working on in priorities. What I can tell you, and Commissioner Jones can probably elaborate if he wants to, the Uptown Sid and Bid are very concerned as well about some of the displacement, and they're currently working with a consultant to look at what they can do with their funds to offset some of the costs of the rising rents, to encourage and incent minority-owned businesses. So that's, it's a priority to them as well, and they're having a lot of conversations in that community, in that neighborhood. But that, you know, that's happening around their table. So for us, our job is to hear if people who are paying into that assessment, if they have, if they want to appeal that decision. So that's what this public hearing is for. And I, you know, I don't blame you, it's a lot that we, a lot of issues we take on up here, and it can be really confusing. All right, other, anyone else here who would like to be heard on the special assessment in Uptown for the Uptown bid? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close that public hearing, and this will be referred back to the Community Development Committee. All right, next that will take us to a city commission to hear appeals on another special assessment, but this is related to nuisance rule 8732. So Scott, can you explain this and what this is for?
Absolutely. This evening, the City Commission is sitting as the board review to hear appeals of charges levied on special assessment nuisance rule Number 8732. Charges on the rule are comprised of past due billings during Charges on the role comprised of past due billings during the period from July 1 of 2017 to December 31 of 2017. The special assessment role includes charges for violations related to refuse, weeds, inoperable vehicles, blight, rental property certification and housing codes. The tentative assessment role contained 2,560 charges totaling 597,695 dollars and 84 cents. Payments made after the creation of the tentative role have reduced the total amount of charges on the role to 473,668 dollars and 48 cents. 21 appeals have been filed to date. This evening is the final opportunity to file an appeal. Appeals must be made in writing and forms are available this evening in room 901 where myself and the deputy city assessor will be available to assist those who wish to file an appeal.
Thank you, Scott. Commissioners, any questions before Scott sits down? Okay, all right. So if you're here to speak, um, on an appeal for this special assessments, assessment nuisance role, please come forward. Uh, again, we ask that you share your name, uh, the city that you live in and you'll be given up to three minutes. Hi, welcome.
My name is Dane Gates. I'm a resident of the 3rd ward. I live in the Baxter neighborhood. And I have, uh, basically, uh, well, a comment, but, um, good evening. This is regarding the Grand Rapids Code Compliance. A complaint regarding my property was received on December 22nd, 2016. It was anonymous to my understanding until I saw a black SUV in front of the house next door with Marion Barrera Young of the Baxter Neighborhood Crime Prevention looking up my driveway. Dealing with code compliance is trauma for those asset restricted due to short timelines to make expensive repairs and challenges to get contractors to 49506 zip code. It should also be noted as a matter of public record that code compliance is viewed as retaliation against residents by the city of Grand Rapids, causing additional economic burden and creating additional stress for struggling property owners. Having gone through this experience, it is my goal to work toward improvements for residents through education and information regarding code compliance. It is my understanding the city of Grand Rapids has hired a social worker to assist in code compliance process. This is an encouraging step. I would also encourage continuous review of internal process improvements for code compliance. Property, property retention prevents gentrification. Thank you.
Thank you.
And if I could, I'd like to leave a copy of this with the clerk.
Yeah, I would, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
I'm Marion Barrera Young and in December of two of, um, last year, I don't have a black SUV. We do do code compliance and we work with the city of Grand Rapids, but if people are unable to do some of the things, I put them on a list for our work camp and they come out and help them to complete them. Some of the residents can't do it and I actually pay for people in the neighborhood that with lawn mowers and things like that to cut the grass for, for senior citizens and disabled people. However, if you're able to do, do that and do it yourself, then that's, that your responsibility as a homeowner. If you can't, um, get something done where it's a code compliance issue, there's, there are grants from the city and we have helped residents get those grants, bring them down to the city and help them through that process. So if there's a problem with completing something, you should contact the neighborhood association whose name is on that, that list and we will help you.
Thank you. All right, others who wish to be heard on the nuisance role?
My name is Ladonna. I also agree with the comments that have been made, but not with Marion. The news, I have a problem with it and it is going to cause a nuisance with the low income people. I've read it. It's feasible, but, but there's going to be a problem. And I believe that, uh, I, I want to see, see all these people helping in the community because that's, my community is your community, Marion. So I want to see all these people that are cutting grass for senior citizens and, and doing this and that and people she's paid because I'm there every day of the week. And I've seen nothing. So please do not get up here and insult our community and lie to kick it.
Thank you. All right, others who wish to be heard on the nuisance role? So if you're here to, to appeal a nuisance role violation, um, you are welcome to come forward. Hi, welcome.
Thank you and, uh, thank you for listening. I, my name is Anita Johnson. I live in East Town at 1248 Dunham Street. I'm here for a nuisance, uh, complaint that, uh, was, I guess grateful for the good, public good that was provided and a large walnut tree that was cut down by the city. I, I am particularly as I had the opportunity to hear this morning and I heard, I believe her name is Martha, speak about the role and these violations to, um, the roles and this role of a special assessment that is being done by when there is a large bill like upwards, almost three and a half, uh, $3,500. And I hear about this 100,000 that people actually voted on for the benefit of the public, but yet this is for one house, one tree in which I did get bids and it was not, as someone else said, it's difficult to get people. It's difficult to get, uh, other people coming. I'm new here to Grand Rapids, fairly new, five years, but I have noticed a lot of houses being foreclosed upon. And I was looking into the process and I see that it does seem to be a very clear process of this method of creating a large nuisance, which is of not the fault of the person. This particular tree is actually on both lands and the, and I informed the person who came out and they disregarded that and it's put the onus totally on one property. The person who's in business and the property next to mine has connections, so they were able to get their complaint completely shut down within a day, whereas I have to have the sole role to try to take care of that, which is 3% of that entire neighborhood's budget that I am to meet, which puts my house in danger, which I work to pay the taxes. And there, there is some question about this being allowed to be a special assessment, which there is not a benefit to an entire community. It is a private, uh, land between two people and there was no consent given. And in addition, as the one woman said, there's a feeling of, of, of a violation. The people came on to, I, I called the city, informed them that I had someone coming. That was ignored. The person came without any, uh, notification, arrived with a big truck on the property. I could not, you know, they came with a big, what am I going to do? I informed, I did not want the, the, the tree, uh, taken. The tree at that point did not have things hanging over it. It was, um, it didn't, it didn't have a huge danger and what I'm saying is that I, I did not have a choice in that matter. I wanted to keep the tree. I'm an artist. I could design with it. They did take part of the tree.
Ms. Johnson, your
My time is up.
It is, but, uh, but I'm going to have you connect with Scott and, um, fill out the paperwork and
Um, I do have an affidavit that has all the information. It's addressed, was one hundred to the city assessor and I would like them to take in consideration, uh, to, to, uh, this information, if I could give it to you.
Yep, you know what? I'm, I'm going to have you give it to our assessor, Scott, uh, and he'll walk you through the process and take any additional information that you have and, and follow up.
I will, I will address it to both the city's attorney and the assessment because, um, that, that assessment is too, uh, personal property is not, um, it's not necessarily legal. So I would like that.
You are welcome to, absolutely.
Put on the notice.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson, for coming down.
I would like to do that.
Yep. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Joyce again. I do want to, um, comment on how hard it is to get in, um, people, to get things done in the inner city. They won't come or I've had, I've talked to some workers about some things I need it done and they say, we're working on things down on Wealthy Street. We're working on different businesses. We don't have time to come and they won't come into the city. So that is a real, real fact. So I just want to be on the record for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Danielson. We, we've heard that as well and we know it's really tough right now. Yeah, thank you. All right, others who wish to be heard on the nuisance role? Yeah, and Scott, will you, will you connect with, um, Ms. Anita Johnson?
So I have, um, a comment too about that again with the assessments. So she got up and she mentioned something, um, and I don't know how folks find out if there's any services. I do know of a person, so this was the first time I ever heard that there was anything that the city would try to do or that there was an organization even that would try to help people with repairs so that they wouldn't lose their home. I happen to know of a woman who is very low income and has some, um, you know, personal mental health issues and she is afraid she's going to lose her home because she can't afford to paint it. She's tried to get volunteers. She's behind. She got an extension. I guess when I think about all of this stuff that's going on with housing, man, I just really feel like, um, there are people that need help to stay in those homes. I would love to see some more intervention and I would love to have that information if there are people that are doing things or organizations somehow to get that out to people that are living in the community that have to put a railing up and they've got specifications and if they, if their contractor did it wrong, this is another friend of mine, uh, she has to redo it all. So I'm worried about the woman losing her home. What would be great is until we come up with how to fund the Affordable Housing Fund, I'd really like to see more effort right now in keeping some displacement from happening for people losing their homes over repairs they cannot make.
Thank you, Martha. You know, uh, I am going to put Connie Bohach on the spot a little bit and ask her to come up. We, uh, just today during our budget session, we talked about our community development programs and some of the work we're doing to make sure that we are providing support for low income families who have, uh, who have housing needs. We do work with home repair services. We actually provide them with funding through CDBG. But Connie, can you just share publicly, uh, you know, one, if someone is struggling, where they can go for help and what programs we have available?
So, um, actually the code compliance, um, department works with a number of nonprofits and tries to
Oh, and you know what? Connie has a, has some laryngitis and so if she's a little hard to hear, it's not her fault. Um, she'll try to speak into the microphone a little bit, Martha.
So we, um, try to direct citizens, um, who may have code orders to community nonprofits, um, that might have some dollars available. Home Repair Services has a minor home repair program that often can be helpful. The city itself has a housing rehabilitation, um, program that's specifically for low modding home persons to be able to get dollars, to be able to make improvements to their home. Some of the senior services throughout the community also have, um, small pots of money to provide minor improvements. Sometimes, um, agencies like disability advocates, depending on, um, the situation in your property might also have resources. So there's a variety of, of community resources. Unfortunately, at the city, the only tool that we really have is the housing rehabilitation program. Someone mentioned previously, um, that we are, um, focusing more in terms of trying to have some avenues for case management services. Code compliance will not have a dedicated position, but we'll be working with the position in 311, which is called the Community Liaison. Sorry, I forgot what the name is. It's a new position that was, um, put into the budget last year and is just getting up and operating. Um, and Becky Joe Clever has been working on that and Alex Melton is the staff person. So that person will be available to us, um, for any, um, individuals that may need more assistance.
Great, thank you. So, so those of you here or even those watching, uh, because this is being streamed live, uh, I'd encourage you just to call 311 and, uh, they will help direct you to any resources that may exist. All right, again, this, the public hearing is still open for the nuisance role. So if you want to speak on the nuisance role, okay.
Yes, hi, my name is Ms. Marion from Grand Rapids. I'm not here for the nuisance role, but I want to comment. I mentioned, I think Martha mentioned about, um, a friend of hers, she's disabled and I'm thinking about the ADA, the, uh, ADA Individual Disability Act. I mean, ADA is like, I'm, I'm not, I'm not all known about it, but I know they should have a, a mediator or advocate for disabled people. So I don't know where they go, but it should be a contact number somewhere for the disabled before they get thrown out on the street. Someone should know about this. So I'm just speaking up for the ADA and the IDEA disability people. So just figured I'd say that.
Thank you. We do have a resource. We partner with disability advocates of Kent County. So, thank you.
Information paperwork, like not just get on the line, online paperwork, like handout. Because many of them can't do the computer.
Yep, we'll, uh,
Handouts.
Maybe I can have you connect with the staff and we'll make sure that you get that. All right, so if you're here to speak on the nuisance role, uh, please come forward and then I'll close this public hearing. Oh my God. I didn't even know there was a dog in here. Scared me. Is that a dog?
Hi, my name is Michelle Truskowski. I'm from Grand Rapids, Michigan. And I was wondering with these assessments and everything that these people get notices on these, why can't they get something in writing on that piece of paper that says, if you're having financial problems, please call this number? A lot of people don't know to call 311. You know, you have a lot of senior citizens in this city.
That's, that's a great idea and we'll, we'll look at the communication. All right. Yeah, thank you. All right, anyone else who wishes to be heard on the nuisance role? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close that public hearing and that will be referred to our Community Development Committee. Um, so next up will take us to a city commission discussion. And again, this is a discussion item, uh, and we will kick this off. This is a discussion and follow up to the discussion that we had a couple of weeks ago about our plans to move forward with a process to replace Commissioner Allen, who is stepping down from his seat. His last day with us is going to be on June 12th. And so I'll open this up. I think I'll start with our city attorney since questions have been raised about, uh, is this in violation of term limits? And I know we talked about this at our last meeting, but, um, city attorney, maybe if you can speak to two things, process and the, the language about our role in replacing someone for, or I should say, filling a vacancy. And then also if you can just speak briefly and share what you shared last time with the commission about your legal opinion related to the term limits language.
Title 2, section 9.2 about term limits. If we put it in context, it overall speaks about the eligibility for election. For example, it says, no person shall be eligible for election as a city commissioner of any ward for more than two terms. And then it goes on to say, no person shall be
Are you having a hard time hearing?
Eligible for election as mayor for more than two terms. Then it goes on to say, a person shall be eligible for ward city commission, which I think was brought up, but there's a and in there. It says and for two terms as a mayor, which says that the commissioner, you can serve as two terms as a commissioner and two terms as a mayor. What it doesn't do is speak to appointments. And in this particular case specifically, Commissioner White is not seeking election, nor would he be eligible for election. The section that speaks specifically to appointments is under title 5, section 86, which gives the commission authority to appoint someone to a vacancy with a majority vote. It does not, um, list any specific requirements of how the process should go and it does not, um, mention term limits. So it does not say that you cannot appoint someone, um, based on term limits. And so of course it's our position that we're not in violation.
Okay, thank you, city attorney. I know, just wanted to make sure you had an opportunity to speak to that, and I know we talked about it last time as well. In fact, it was one of the initial things that we had asked you to weigh in on, so. So, commissioners, this is to open up another conversation. We said we would do that last time, and now, I think I'll start with our third ward commissioner, Commissioner Lanier. This is her colleague in the third ward who is stepping down, and so, I'll start with you, commissioner.
Thank you, mayor. So, I think it was May 2nd that Commissioner Allen announced that he was planning to resign from the commission on June 12th. And although I respect and understand the decision that Commissioner Allen needed to make for, for his personal reasons, his decision could not have come at a worse time, in my opinion, for this commission. We will be making some very difficult decisions that, in my opinion, require someone understanding the nature of the things that will be brought before them. Some of those critical decisions are tied to our city manager search, and probably in the next three months, we will be making a decision on a city manager. And although I recognize that on the outside, looking in, there are a number of people who may believe they understand the nature of this work and sitting in this seat, but I would probably think that every person sitting here would share that what you thought the job was, it's not necessarily only that. There are more requirements that are tied to this work, and there are a lot of things to learn, and even with my previous experience as a school board member, did not necessarily equip me to being able to hit the ground running when I arrived. So, it did take some time. Another decision, and so, not only learning my job, but also learning the job of the city manager, to make sure that I am equipped enough to be able to make the best decision for the city's future, I think is a critical decision. Another one is tied to housing. So, we've been talking about housing since I've been a city commissioner, and this is year five for me, and I remember the first few, probably within the first 60 days, I remember time and time again, there were developers coming before the commission, and I didn't quite understand what it was that they were bringing forward, but what I knew was that something was wrong. And I remember saying, "I don't know what this is, but I am not approving another market rate development until I understand this." And from there, we started with the Housing Strategies, and then Housing Now, and we're finally at a place where we're making some, some of those critical decisions. We've made some, but we have a few more that are yet to be made. And we're doing another public engagement to be able to get the public to weigh in. If they've been that tough for us over the past five years, certainly anyone new, without any experience coming in, will have a very difficult time understanding it enough to immediately make a decision, which we will be faced with, in my opinion, in another, probably 60 days. Another critical decision is tied to police and community relations, and we have, last fiscal cycle, we allocated funding to develop police and community relations policies and procedures, and this is the second year of that. We have, we've spent very little from those dollars, and, but it's time for us to start making some decisions about how that money should be spent. And once again, if it has taken us this long to get to the place of making some of those decisions, it's important for someone who's making those decisions to understand what's being brought before them. And then there are countless other decisions that we will be making and, and, and working on. A friendly policy, which I think Commissioner White has the experience to be able to hit the ground running on those as well. So, I appreciate the comments that were shared this evening. I respectfully disagree with the comments that were made, but I do appreciate the fact that, Bonnie, that you did come, and that you shared your position, and we've had many exchanges, and sometimes we agree, and other times we don't, and I just, this is just one of those times that we don't agree. And as the city attorney has already mentioned, I wouldn't recommend something that I thought was not in good legal standing. I hope that this explanation, although we had this conversation maybe three, four weeks ago, I'm hoping that today it's helping the public. We had this conversation in public, but it was at 9:30 a.m., so I'm hoping tonight that it'll help the public to understand the position that we're all in, at least for me personally, that I'm in, and trying to make the best decision for this city. I think the last thing I'll add is that I do respect that, that the voters need to speak, and that the voters need to have an opportunity to weigh in, and I think they've done that in supporting Commissioner White in the past, and anyone that we would seek to put an appointment who has not served, actually, actually would be contrary to allowing the voters to have an opportunity to weigh in. I also think that, to the point that was made about selecting someone who we all know, and I said this before when we talked about it, anyone who is appointed to this body, brand-new, having no experience, will very likely vote exactly the way I would want them to. It's just as simple as that. They will be relying on me to help them to understand what's, what's in front of them, and so, they very likely vote exactly how I would want them to, and I think that, that limits the opportunity to be able to have the public a voice of reason, and an independent voice that I think Commissioner White would provide. So, I think with all that being said, these are all, this is just information that I shared before, but wanted an opportunity to share tonight.
Thank you. Thank you, commissioner. Others who, who wish to share their thoughts? Commissioner Kelly?
Well, yes, I'm happy to go next. When we had this discussion a couple of weeks ago, first of all, it was a week after, didn't give us a whole lot of time, but a week after the announcement on the part of Commissioner Allen that he would not be staying on, one of the questions I asked our city attorney was specifically about the ballot language of term limits, because I wanted to make sure we did not run afoul of that. And she also explained, she explained that tonight then again for us, as well as our charter language. And I think it's just important to recognize that when this has happened before, we always get the question, "Why can't we just have an election right away?" But the char, yeah, the charter makes it clear that it's our job to do an appointment, unless there's a nonpartisan election in the near future, before we would actually go through, as we will next spring, when people have a filing deadline, and then they, they run for election and either have a primary, if there are more than two people, or go on to November. And ideally, we would like the people to make that, that decision and not have this body do it. But again, the charter is clear that it's our obligation to do so, unless we have that special situation where they have an election that's nonpartisan, that's on the ballot anyway. So, that put, that's where we are in this case, and again, as Commissioner Lanier has just outlined, we have many things on our plate. The, the charter is not, not, does not give a specific direction in terms of process, and this, I think, just allows us to go as quickly as possible to those voters themselves to choose their next commissioner without giving an incumbent, a person who's served, even if it's only a, a short period of time, that incumbent advantage, that name recognition. Ideally, we would, again, have that election. That's not possible, so we do have to make this choice, and so, I just, I just want to make that clear, because this is not any attempt to circumvent the people's voice. In fact, I would say that it's just the opposite. We would like to, we just have this unusual opportunity right now, where Commissioner White would be available, and just hold this place temporarily until the people can vote.
Yeah, and I, I know a lot of us have had lots of conversations these past couple weeks, since we had this discussion initially, and, and I've, I think all of us have heard that, that many people wish that we could call a special election. And so, we, several of us have asked the, our city attorney to do an opinion about what that would take. Would it be a charter amendment or a charter revision? And is that a possibility for us to explore moving forward, and so that it wouldn't have to be an appointment process, because there are downfalls? And we've also heard feedback from the community about that as well, creating an unfair playing field going into an election, where people will very likely be filing petitions six months, eight months from now. So, others who wish to be heard? Commissioner?
Yeah, I, I'll just say that, you know, I appreciate all of your thinking about this, and I too want us to make the best decisions possible, but for me, I want to, I want us to follow a good process, and until we change that process, I'm most comfortable with using the process that people expect, which is an open process. So, with, yeah, I just wanted to say that I support an open process for, for filling this vacancy. With regard to someone voting similar to you, that I, you know, I've only been up here for four months, and there's two times that I can think of, John probably wished I would have voted with him, and I didn't. So, I think that, you know, there's, there's some incredible leaders out, out there who, you know, they're centered, grounded people who can make decisions and can, and be great leaders, you know, pretty quickly. So, I just want to say that I, I continue to support an open process. I, I like the idea of taking this opportunity to make provision for a special election in the future, but, yeah, I think that people are expecting from the past, whether or not that we have the right to do something different is another thing, an open process, and that's what I'd support.
Thank you, commissioner. Others, again, this is a discussion. We can't vote on this until the position is vacated, so until June 12th or after. Any others want to weigh in? Commissioner?
Yeah, I just, you know, this is terribly frustrating that, you know, we can't decide the color of a trash can in this town unless we have a, some sort of public engagement process around it, excuse me, and to the fact that we're, you know, five minutes before our last meeting, I get informed, "Hey, we're gonna, I think we should just appoint Jim White." Just, just smells funny to me, and I don't think there's anything, you know, impropriety going on, but, you know, that's one guy. There's, you know, let's look back, who's been elected to third ward city commission that's still kicking, right? Like Commissioner Lumpkin's sitting out there, Scotty Bone's still around, if I remember correctly, I think Bill Blickley's still running around town. So, the idea that if we're gonna just go to one person without having a process, and it just is decided that it's Jim White, just doesn't sit right with me. And at the end of the day, there is a expected process. Whether we like it or not, it's the world we live in, the process that's laid out before us. Yes, we get to make a decision, we get to design that process however we want. If we don't want to have a open interview process, we don't have to. But this is Grand Rapids, and at this point in our tenure, we can't do a damn thing unless we have a public process around it, or we get chastised to the ends of the earth. And so, for all intents and purposes, we need to have a public process for this. And whether or not it sets up someone for success in a future election, that's the world that we live in. That's the process that we have to deal with. This guy got a benefit. Commissioner Kelly got a benefit. Maybe, maybe they didn't. You know what? Incumbents lose all the time. If you don't do a good job, you can get voted out. We have term limits, they are elections, and so, for this point, we have to have a process, and open it up. And if Commissioner White wants to put his hat in the ring, and he shows up on top, this is America. And if you do the best, and you convince three of us, or four of us, four, four of us, I guess, to get to, to get to a majority, then you get the job. And if you can't make, you can't sit down there and let me ask you questions, and convince me that you're the best person for that job, then, you know, you don't deserve to sit up here.
Thanks, commissioner. Commissioner Jones, you want to?
Yeah, thank you, mayor. I also appreciate the opportunity to discuss this very openly, and most importantly, in an evening session, so that more citizens were able to engage, and to obviously comment as well, when the time is appropriate at the end. I think my colleague, Commissioner Kelly, made a very good point, in that this being, I think in many ways, a very unique circumstance. I say that in that we are looking at, to a point that was made by Commissioner Lanier, we're looking at some pretty unique circumstances with regards to some of the decisions that we have to make right now, which includes the selection of a new city manager, the ongoing issue of trying to find solutions around affordable housing, as well as the ongoing issue that has been going on for a long time around police and community relations. I think that there is benefit in having the wisdom of someone like Jim White at the table, who actually, along with yourself, mayor, actually sat at this table the last time we made a decision, this body made a decision about the selection of a city manager. I think there's, there's benefit in having that type of wisdom at the table. I've heard from a number of people in community about this discussion, about this issue. There are some who have questioned the, I guess, the age of, of Jim White. They've felt the need to perhaps be in support of someone who is younger, and I understand that in terms of wanting new and fresh ideas. But again, I go back to what I see as a significant strength that would be brought forth with his presence on this day, and that is wisdom, the fact that he has a lived experience that a lot, that a lot of folks don't have. And the issues that we are dealing with are very, very, very serious issues, and I don't at all question the aptitude or the smarts and the abilities and the qual, and qualifications of individuals in our community who reside in the third ward, who have a desire to serve in this capacity, on this, on this commission. But as the one who was most recently appointed and was, was elected, there is a very real learning curve, and I was not summa cum laude, nor was I magna cum laude in college. I don't consider myself to be the smartest guy around, and it was just, you know, my experience has been, was when I first was appointed, it took me quite a bit of time to catch on and learn, and was, I was, I compare it to drinking from firehogs. And that's, I think, that's to be expected for anybody who would look to step into this seat, except for an individual who has sat here before. Someone who can literally, as the old saying goes, hit the ground running. And I just think that this season in our city, that that's a benefit, and it would be different if, if the person of Jim White would, obviously, if he were looking to seek reelection, that's a whole different story. But we're talking for a season, and in my opinion, probably one of the most important seasons that our city has ever experienced. And so, forgive me for erring on the side of wisdom, but that is, that is what I know best, is to be able to fall back on the fact that there are those who have a lived experience that I think could bring significant benefit to the discussions that we're having right now, that are critically important to the future of our city, not just the current, but the future of our city.
Thank you, commissioner. So, again, commissioners, we will continue to hear from the, the community, and, and take feedback, and listen, and have conversations, and then again, we'll bring this back to our table in several weeks, a few weeks. All right? Okay, so next I will open us up to public comments. So, if you are here tonight to be heard about any other issue before us, you are welcome to come forward. Again, the same rules apply. We ask that you share your name, the city that you live in, and you'll be given up to three minutes to speak.
Bonnie Burke, I live in Grand Rapids. I appreciate all your comments. Let me do a scenario for you. Mayor Bliss gets hit by a bus. She's in a coma. As of tomorrow, heaven forbid. Well, the city is at such a critical time in our history that, gosh, we just need to bring back Mayor Hartwell for a year and a half, or Ruth Kelly, or any of you. Let's just bring back someone who has already served two terms. And Ms. Hitchcock, I, I respect your opinion. I'm not an attorney. I've never looked, opened a law book, but I've had three attorneys look at this, and although you talk about election, it also talks about eligibility. A person is eligible to be a ward commissioner for two terms. They can run again as mayor. I don't know Jim White. I don't know what critical point the city is in, but if it's looking for a city attorney, I know that man right there. Our interim city attorney, or I mean, sorry, our interim city manager is probably the sharpest, best person. If you could get him on this board, he's been here for years, and he knows how to run the city. I watched all four of the people that this wise board filtered down out of 62 people. people. It was a joke. Even the press said, these people are not qualified to be a city manager. The only one that had any real qualifications was the city manager of Port Huron. Unfortunately, the city was too small, and he didn't fit the bill. Get someone in here with qualifications. If we're at a critical time, don't sit here and say, we're gonna skirt the law, we're gonna just bring back someone who's ineligible to serve because he has served for two terms. Because any one of you could step down, and you, as a board, could just bring back anybody. What needs to happen in this city charter is we need to do away with appointments, and we need to uphold the law. I don't know Jim White, I've never met him, I have no idea if he's good, or bad, or qualified, or whatever. But this is an insult to the people of Grand Rapids, and I applaud both First Ward Commissioners for speaking up. This is not a critical time in the city. There's always a critical time in the city. So if you want a city manager, either appoint Eric DeLong, or get someone with qualifications. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, others who wish to be heard?
My name is Ladonna Norman, I'm a housing advocate and policing advocate in Grand Rapids. I just want to remind you, I'm tired of hearing about the word affordable housing, 'cause nobody really has a definite, uh, definition of it. Uh, so I want to bring to your attention that, uh, incident that happened at the Lazy T Motel, where a child was injured, fatally injured, uh, those people were homeless. So what are you doing to, what are these boards doing, and, and the people you've put in place to help homeless people? Because we still don't have a definite answer. And Rosalyn, you completely flat-out lied to me in October. You said that you would erase the, uh, the fees for, the, um, application fees. Not, we were in the process, not, we're gonna try it, not, we're gonna work on it. You said it. Go on my Facebook, go back to that day I met with you, and you'll see that you assured me that that would be gone. That was last year in October, all right? We need to get somebody on here that has some integrity. We don't need any more monkey see, monkey do commissioners, all right? We're tired of that. I sit up here, and I'm tired of coming up here and embarrassing the city of Grand Rapids. We had an incident yesterday where we were in the inner city, and I was able to go through a whole bunch of police and SWAT, and be in the center of, uh, incident on Franklin Street, where there were civilians all over, and they did not do a, a very good job of securing that place. I actually walked through the police that were, had this house surrounded. And then there's people sitting on cars with their phones, and then M lives, embarrassing us, and more, talking about community leaders. Four black guys sitting on a car are not considered community leaders, all right? And then last but not least, Cosetja, they marched on May 1st, but on May 5th, you promoted Wealthy Street, the most gentrified street here, and it was like a slap in their face. They pay taxes, they live here. I just want to know how much of kickback y'all getting, and, um, and where can I get in, to fit in? Because, don't you work on the land bank too? We getting rid of David Allen for conflict interest, shouldn't we get rid of you too, Mayor Bliss? I mean, you're no Jennifer Granholm.
Thank you, Ladonna. Others who wish to be heard?
James White has a PhD in draft dodging. Watchdog Miller back. I observed, I did know him, I observed him many times, and, uh, as far as bringing people who were ready to hit the ground running, you never applied that to me to get on the Rapid Board, okay? I was ready to hit, I, I was ready to go many times over the years. I never, by the same criteria of bringing White back, uh, I should have been on the board in the first place. Uh, let's, uh, tomorrow, uh, the Rapid will meet to find, find a CEO, or thirty-four people from, uh, they have thirty-four candidates, uh, I, I wasn't included as, as candidate, so, uh, official candidate. And, uh, White was on, well, let's go back to early in his career, he was a demagogue. Uh, all spring, all hot summer, long summer long, he would, uh, advocate to turn Franklin Street and, into MLK or something or other, when he could have gone after Jefferson, uh, who was a military coward who, uh, lost Richmond to the, surrendered Richmond to the British, uh, slaveholder, alleged rapist of, of, uh, Sonny Hemmings. It was either Jefferson or his brother who did that. And, uh, we were, uh, Miss, uh, Scott and I were gonna prepare a full position paper, uh, on the, on the White fiasco, uh, and we're willing to, uh, impanel a, uh, a group of citizens, eight or nine, uh, including, uh, Mr. Denire Robinson, and, uh, Dr. Paulium's son, uh, to go over and, and bring before you, who would be the best candidate for the Third Ward. It is your decision, but you are starting a war. I will recommend to, to Mrs. Burke, that if we have to go back to this, get it, all you guys be on the bed for years, so you finally understand. We'll get language in here. I mean, a whole lot of you would rather the hell, a whole lot of you off the board and never back us up. How many dozens of times you heard me advocate, uh, for the black, we get our back, White never showed up. When you put him on the White Board, he didn't because he, he was a, he's a rubber stamp. Uh, when he got over to the rubber, when he got over to the, uh, Rapid Board, he never said a word. Since he left, left this commission, he has never come up and backed people on all the housing issues, he's a little rubber stamp, that's what you mean. And by that very criteria of wisdom, uh, then you should be, put me on the Rapid, or at least put me as CEO. I am willing to work two years as CEO, that's the way my friends work, for no pay at all, okay? You can bring Varga salary over three hundred thousand a year, turning into free, free passes for senior citizens. Uh, but, uh, you're interviewing all sorts of people out of town for, for that, uh, position. Now, uh, on, uh, the spectrum ramp, uh, why not civilize the Rapid, the, uh, I mean, the Rapid buses, the rival, uh, spectrum buses are beautiful. Right now, they already have passes, or fewer than a hundred, a hundred a day use around trips out of the fourteen thousand employees in Spectrum.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Oh, is that your water, Mr. Miller? Is that your water? No, okay.
It's a freebie.
All right. Thank you.
Robert Metzger again, uh, East Grand Rapids, Michigan. Primary location is 312 Prospect Avenue Northeast. I'll keep it brief, 'cause I know it's been a long evening, and heated evening, and some folks probably would like to get out of here, so, uh, just a point of information for Mr. DeLong. A study, that is a formal study, is something that is published and available to the public to review. If it's not something you can make available to the public, it could be a swag, for all we know. Uh, a traffic warrant signal analysis is something you do prior to approving a project of a signal that's element or essential to that project. You do that first. Right now, we're doing it after the fact. Safety is not a retroactive concern when it comes to citizens. Uh, I could go through and read the rest of my bullets, but to be honest, as a professional, I don't have the energy to waste my time. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, others who wish to be heard?
Russell Homestead, Westside, Grand Rapids. On the, um, decision about, pending decision about replacing of Commissioner Allen, um, I've had the opportunity to speak to a couple of you, uh, about this, and I, I completely understand the logic behind, um, and this, the logic behind appointing, or possibly appointing someone with the type of experience, the gentleman you're, you're thinking of. But I also do understand Commissioner O'Conner's and Commissioner Repart's, uh, discussion about transparency and discussion about public input. I would think that there is a way to, uh, to do both of these things, um, in having a process where, um, I believe it's Mr. White, is that correct? Uh, putting him forward as well as some other candidates, um, so that there may be a public process, or, uh, the ability to have public engagement or an application process, as well as having somebody there with the type of, um, background and the type of wisdom that, that Commissioner Jones spoke about, um, rather than, uh, than just doing, uh, just having the one candidate in there. And allowing the candidates the time and the opportunity to present themselves and their own ideas, but also allowing Mr. White to present himself and his ideas to the public. And I think that doing so may, uh, give the public a chance to be able to see some of the wisdom, and some of the logic, and what you're, what you're trying to do, but also give them the ability to be heard, and give them the ability to, to have their own input, uh, towards, towards how this is rectified. So, uh, I know that time is of the essence, especially with how many very important things are, are on the agenda for the city right now, but, uh, sometimes, uh, hard decisions need to take the proper amount of time to get through, and can't be rushed. And this may be one of those times where we don't rush it, and we try to do the thing that is the wisest, which is give, give all parties a chance to get their, uh, their, their voices heard. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Russ. All right, others who wish to be heard?
My name is Martha again. So I came tonight to do what I do, is to speak out for affordable housing. That was my plan in coming here tonight. There are some very interesting things, and I learned some things. I appreciated that you were able to give a little of, um, some instruction, so that the community, even myself, would be more. So I got 2:39. Um, I read that story in the paper that Ladonna referred to, and I thought to myself, what a horrible situation, that mother is living in a motel room with three people. One of them is a screaming child, they all do it. And when you're in a hotel room, you can't put the baby in the crib and go into the other room, not for five minutes. And I thought, that's just a horrible, horrible situation. It's dangerous. Anyway, I would think that people would know that. You talk about how much we have to get done, and how important it is, and how we should not put it off, but I've been coming for a year. I'm not a professional. I have lots of time. And I will not quit. I raised an ADD kid, I'm trained in not quitting. I'm also trained in seeing systems that do not really provide a service. They talk, and they talk, and they talk, and they come up with things like by right development, where the community's running in with their hair on fire, because it's not gonna solve a problem, it's gonna create another one. I've got about a minute. I'm gonna talk to you about the things that you're talking about are so important, we've waited this long, we can wait another two weeks. He's got two more weeks, we got two more weeks, let's get some community input on this. That's important. Even John O'Connor said that. I'm really impressed. Just thought you ought to know when I'm impressed. I want to talk about something that I came to talk about, and that is all of these outrageous rental fees. I spent a couple days, I'm gonna talk fast. I'll come back. All these outrageous rental fees, you guys consider things in the morning, before a public input, and then you vote on them in the night, you've already made your agreements. So I've got, um, I hope this isn't gonna happen within the next couple weeks, that people can actually speak about this, as Homes For All is out there educating and trying to involve people in these decisions. If it takes us a month, then let's put that decision off for a month, because it's really important. I spoke to a man that spent three hundred dollars in fees over the last year, trying to find a place to live. Okay, I don't know any other business where someone has to pay to apply to buy that product. The only thing, I mean, even if you go to get a loan from a bank, you don't pay to apply for the loan. So I'm sitting here thinking, you know, landlords, right now, I got a woman I'm talking to, seventy-plus years old, she's out where everybody else has been pushed out, she's in Catwood, they're gonna raise her rent a hundred and ten dollars. She's on a fixed income, her husband has to have surgery, I know I'm out of time, I'll be back.
Thanks, Martha. All right, others who wish to be heard?
Hi, my name's Phil Mull, I'm a Westsider, been a Westsider my whole life. Anyway, uh, I came down to support the West, uh, or the John Ballerian Neighbors Association. I don't know, I'm always out of line on that, but, um, um, other than the restricted funds, the CDBG and JAG funds and stuff like that, I think it'd be great if you could throw them some, like, unrestricted funds, and I don't mean just John Ballerian Neighbors, but all the neighborhood associations. It's constantly a battle of, well, we can't do this because the funding is restricted from being used like that, and et cetera, et cetera. And in the meeting tonight, uh, a different neighborhood association kind of got accused of being the instigator of a problem at somebody's residence. You know, they said, oh, I see this black suburban, and so-and-so's inside it. Being with John Ballerian Neighbors, I, I have a feeling I know what, what happened. They were probably driving by because they were requested by the city to validate that the, the tree still existed, or whatever, the violation still existed. Well, a lot of the restricted funds don't allow for community, uh, or for the neighborhood association to really get better involved with the community, so... Just try to throw them a bone. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, others who wish to be heard?
Hello, everyone, how y'all doing? My name is Ms. Mary, uh, I'm from Grand Rapids. Uh, I wanna, like, the first thing, Commissioner Lanier, I did talk to Laniel LeBron, and he called me, and we did talk about the multicultural festival, and we talking, so we're gonna meet, and we'd like to meet with you also, before we do our AHA committee. And I want to let everybody know, it's gonna be called the Multicultural Festival, it's gonna be held August the 11th at Rosa Parks Circle. Our theme is, uh, we all must make a contribution, together we are the solution. And also, the theme song is, um, "The Things We Do" by, uh, Yolanda Adams, from, from the Mountain High Valley Low, uh, CD. Um, also, I want to just mention about what happened in Texas, and also, the Parkland children and the students in Florida. We just really need to, like, you know, just see what's going on. I mean, I don't want to talk about the gun issues, it's, it's not the issue. The issue, I'm for, for prevention, and what I'm doing is for, for prevention, so I'm not, when we come out with the AHA committee, we gonna come through the mediators organizing real education, the more, and so we want everybody to contribute. This is, uh, everybody hands on deck, it's not about Ms. Mary, or, or anyone, and, and Laniel, uh, LeBron, he's, Ellen, I'm blank, and he is really wanting for, and some, uh, Commissioner Lanier really had him call me, and I really thank you for him calling me. It, it was like, the process is going, but we're gonna need you to help us in directing on how we, you know, we can go about this, 'cause it's a really a community effort. And I just want to mention again about the, the kids killing each other, and we need, uh, like, a Baptist school, stay-in-school, and a talent show, to keep the kids busy for the summer, guys. We have to be ahead of this game, 'cause don't think it can't happen in Grand Rapids, because it can. I don't want to wait till something happens in Grand Rapids, we all getting the candles and the yellow tape, let, let, let's do this now. Let's come together now, prevention, get the kids jobs, talent show, uh, what else? Jump rope, basketball, what, you know, whatever. And we asking for the community to come and get, I'm, I'm gonna give you all, uh, Laniel, uh, um, Laniel, uh, LeBron's, uh, phone number, and you all can call him, if you all want to make an appointment with us. We want the whole community to put input. So I'm gonna give out these cards right now to you all, too.
Thank you. All right, others who wish to be heard?
Thank you. Good to see you, thank you.
Hi, I'm Michelle Truskowski again. I just saw something on Facebook today about a nationwide, oh, I'm sorry. About a nationwide problem with PFAS in the water, and that involves the whole country. And I heard that you did some testing on the water here in Grand Rapids, and you neglected to do PFAS, and I don't know if that's true or not, but I'm just wondering if I can get some information on that, or if we can all get some information.
Yes, absolutely. Uh, I will have, Eric, do you want to speak to this?
Sure. Uh, we have done testing of PFAS, and we're also working with MDEQ and others on testing both our water system, uh, drinking water, and also our wastewater treatment, definitely. So the initial testing that we did in 2014, and then again in 2017, showed non-detect at the Lake Michigan Filtration Plant where we make our water, which means there was nothing there. Um, we're, the latest round of the testing, and, um, it came out really, uh, good, and we're way below the, there's a seventy part per trillion limit, and our water is well below that. So those- So those results will be available soon officially.
But that's a great question. And we do have information available about water quality and our testing, and we'll make sure that that gets out as soon as it's finalized. So, thank you for that. All right, other questions, or not questions, other comments tonight? Before I close this public hearing, and turn to my colleagues? Oh, sure, yes. Yes. All right, so I'm gonna close that public comment period, and I will turn to my colleagues on the commission. And I'll start down here with Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to thank everyone for coming out this evening, and that is all.
All right, thank you, Commissioner O'Connor. All right, Commissioner Lanier?
I'd like to thank everyone for coming out this evening. Some really good comments this evening, and have a good night.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Kelly?
Yes, I don't think he's still here, but I wanted to thank Allen Clark for coming out and talking to us about the work that they've done to get our budget information out on the website. I put it on my Facebook page, too. It's really tough, there's so much paper that we use. I feel like we're caught between a rock and a tree. So, you know, it's great that we have citizens out there that are doing that work, to get as much information out to people as possible.
Yeah, thank you, especially considering the size of our budget.
Yes.
Very helpful. Commissioner Repart?
Thanks, everybody, for coming out. And, yeah, we're still, the dates haven't been set yet with public agency, but we'll get them out as soon as we can, 'cause that housing conversation is going to continue.
Thank you, thank you for that reminder. Interim City Manager?
No, thank you, ma'am.
All right, City Attorney? City Clerk? All right, we're adjourned. Have a good night, everyone.
Drive safe.